Commissioner Reina.
Here.
Commissioner Verino.
Here.
Commissioner Alderetti.
Here.
Vice Chair Contures Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza. Commissioner Nguyen. Chair for the record, Commissioner Mendoza and Nguyen will not be present at today's meeting. You have quorum.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. Ready, begin.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Well, now we'll be open to public comments. Does any member have any public comments with regarding non-agendized items? You can fill out a form when pressed to speak with the Secretary. You'll have three minutes to speak. I have several cards here. I'm going to start with Janelle Johnson or Johnson.
Good evening, members of the Planning-
You can pull that microphone down.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm here to speak against the 2525 property proposed at 2525 North Main Street. I'm a resident of Park Santiago and I am opposed to this building. Recently, a friend of mine and I went to two new apartment complexes, one on, it's called 1110, right a block north, two blocks north of there. It has been open for several months and it's only, I believe he said, 20 percent full. Then I went to the one over, another one that's actually in Santa Ana, that first one is in Orange, and it's been open for almost a year, I believe, and it's only 70 percent full. I don't see the need to build this property, especially when you take into consideration all of the proposed development at the Main Place Mall area, which is a much better place for high-density housing, and also on the corner of Memory Lane and Main Street, there's more properties proposed, and also in Orange, right off of the 55, or excuse me, the 22 off-ramp from Main Street. There's two developments more proposed over there. We have seen an increased amount of traffic in our neighborhood, and with, this would not help the congestion of traffic in any way. Please take this under consideration and thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. The next card I have is Dale Helvick.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Back on August 13th, you guys took a look at a project on King Street and Fairview, and I gotta say, you know, this is what I consider responsible development. It was a good project. It came through. It put five homes in this one acre of land, cul-de-sac area and everything else. You guys looked at it. I think it went through with a 7-0 vote. Just want you to imagine if you took that same lot and put in an 84-unit apartment complex, because that's what 2525 would have done. That's the equivalent, 84 units in a one-acre section of land. So, keep that in mind when you look at 2525 and think about what you did on King Street, which was a good project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. The next person I have is Sue McDonald.
My name is Sue McDonald. I live in Park Santiago and here to speak against the project proposed for 2525 Main Street. I've been told by my friends that I'm wasting my time fighting this apartment project because it is a done deal. Big developers have so much power and money that they usually get what they want, but I do not believe that the Planning Commission is just a panel of people that rubber-stamp projects. I've observed your members carefully weighing each project and delving into whether these projects are a good fit for the citizens of the city. I know the city of Santa Ana has a financial crisis and funds coming into the city would be a major weighing factor in this, but not everything is about money when it comes to the bedroom community part of the city. I believe that each one of you are on the Planning Commission to use your skills and insight into making Santa Ana the best it can be. Another Planning Commission back in the 1960s had the opportunity that you have to develop the fringes of our neighborhood. In an area just north of Guaranty Chevrolet, between Santiago and Lincoln Street, apartments were being proposed. Residents from Park Santiago collected thousands of signatures objecting to the apartment project. After the Planning Commission revisited their thoughts on the project, the members agreed that the apartments would change the character of the neighborhood. The project was rejected to preserve the feel of a wonderful community. A few years later, several blocks of new homes were added to this area, and they fit seamlessly into Park Santiago. I hope those Commissioners are proud of their legacy. I have all faith that if 2525, which does not enhance Park Santiago, is rejected, a beautiful project will come along that we all can be proud of and add to the legacy of this Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Is there anyone else at this time who would like to speak on a non-agendized item for this evening? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Item one, we have the approval for the minutes from August 27th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So.
Second? Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, two absent. The minutes from the adjourned meeting of September 24th, is that correct? September 24th, 2018, the strategic plan. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Five, zero, two absent. Third motion is for excused absence of Ken Nguyen and Beatrice Mendoza. Do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, two absent. We'll move on to the business calendar. At this time and place, we'd like to consider item number one, zoning ordinance amendment number 2018-04 to amend various sections of Chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code. At this time, I would like to make a motion to continue this item till 10/22/2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, two absent. At this time and place to consider item number two, general plan amendment of number 2018-04, amendment of application 2018-07 for the annexation of a 25-acre county island on the northeast corner of 17th Street and Tustin Avenue. Do any of the Commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time on this item? Okay. Staff? Selena, are you presenting? Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Chair McLaughlin, members of the Planning Commission. I'm going to have a brief introduction by our, Robert Cortez.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Robert Cortez, Deputy City Manager for the City of Santa Ana, and I am here to give you a brief introduction as far as the annexation process that we have currently underway on this 24-acre unincorporated small island here with, from the County of Orange. Staff has been working on this particular annexation since 2016. The City of Santa Ana was approached by the County of Orange as there are two food establishments that are interested in operating in a vacant parcel owned by the, by a trust. They've approached the city in hopes to offering sewer services to be provided by the City of Santa Ana. We were then contacted by LAFCO, which led to the discussion of annexation. In order for the City of Santa Ana to provide sewer services to an unincorporated island, it is required by LAFCO that the city enter into what is known as an out-of-area service agreement. By entering into an out-of-area service agreement, the city is then obligated to annex an unincorporated island. So there's two approaches. One, which is coming to the full City Council for this, for this out-of-area service agreement or going directly to annexation. So, this city staff presented to the City Council early summer of 2017 to the Edabit Committee, and the City Council gave direction to staff to pursue the application and submittal of annexation. So the city staff has made tremendous progress in terms of putting together an application and all the requirements that go along with the annexation process. We have conducted community meetings, and I believe it was set for September 19th. We did have a lot of public comment from the community of this annexation area. We are now at the point in time where bringing this item before you for consideration. The ultimate timeline is to then bring an item to the full City Council for consideration and then eventually to the city, to the, to the Board of Supervisors' approval and then eventually, and then eventually back to LAFCO for final consideration. Because this is a small island, it is under legislature, a much smoother process which basically dictates that once the city is, has submitted the actual application, the approval process is streamlined. It goes through county, LAFCO, and then final approval. And with that, I'll turn it over to Selena, who's going to provide some more background information.
Thank you, Robert.
Some of this may be repetitive as to what Robert said, but it'll go step-by-step into the details. So, recent changes to state law have streamlined the, and encouraged the annexation of county islands to cities for local services. A small county island is defined as an area that is less than 150 acres and is surrounded or adjacent to a local city. If it is a small island annexation initiated by the city, again, LAFCO shall approve this and state law waives protest by voters and landowners. So recently in 2017, the city approached LAFCO to provide out-of-service, sewer services to the county island, and LAFCO's response was that the county island must be annexed into the city in order to provide those services. And so the city council, city staff presented to City Council more recently in June of 2018, and Council directed staff to prepare and go through the application process with LAFCO. So, why annex? Annexations will then incorporate that area into the City of Santa Ana, which provides logical, physical and service boundaries, more efficient delivery of municipal services and local representation through City Council. The City Council did consider filing the annexation application with LAFCO, which is the Local Agency Formation Commission. It's a regional commission which oversees exchanges of properties from one agency to the other. So LAFCO will complete the analysis and recommendation to their commission, publish a 21-day notice to affected agencies, registered voters and landowners, and conducts a public hearing for the city's application. The area that we're talking about tonight is referred to as the 17th Street County Island. This is located north of 17th Street, east of Tustin Avenue, west of the 55 freeways and south of Santa Clara Avenue. The entire area is approximately 25 acres and currently municipal services are provided by the County of Orange. The actions that are needed tonight and that are before you for consideration would be a general plan amendment to preliminary, preliminarily redesignate the properties to be consistent with their existing land uses and pre-zoning of the properties with similar, similar zoning that matches the general plan. This will then go to the City Council for consideration and then again to LAFCO. So here you can see the proposed area and proposed general plan amendments. The area is comprised of single-family, multifamily and commercial properties, so 49 single-family homes, 32 multifamily, and then some commercial properties and vacant land. The city is proposing to change the general plan designation to be consistent with the existing land uses and the county's existing general plan. So for example, if it's a single-family house, the county's zoning is R1 single-family and the city's zoning will be R1 single-family, and so on for multifamily and commercial. In regards to the pre-zoning, it would also then be consistent with the existing land uses and county zoning, so proposed to be a single-family residential, multifamily and commercial. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation and with the recommendation that the City Council adopt a resolution approving general plan amendment 2018-4 and adopt an ordinance approving amendment application 2018-07, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does the Commissioner have any questions or staff? Eric?
In the area that you showed of there, I think it's 25 acres, can you tell me how many residents there are?
There's 49 single-family homes and 32 multifamily homes. I don't have the number of occupants within those, but Robert may have that information.
Commissioner Alderetti, the number of residents or the population size within this island is approximately 275.
And then, you know how many businesses there are?
I don't know the number of businesses off the top of my head.
Okay. And what about, so I'm trying to think forward, the total cost to the city for pursuing this, do we have an estimate on that? Because I saw a fee schedule in the back.
Correct. We do have a fee schedule currently underway. One thing to mention when it comes to the cost is that we're currently negotiating with the County of Orange, Frank Kim, the CEO, in order to garner additional funding to cover some of the costs from the city as well as improvements that are necessary for this area. When it comes to the services that we provide, Orange County Fire Authority currently services this area, so it would be the same cost that we are currently incurring. When it comes to Police Department, we also do mutual aid, so we do some type of coverage in that particular area, but the main focus in terms of cost for the city could potentially be in the area of code enforcement, so we do have staff doing an analysis at this moment.
And did the City of Tustin, did LAFCO go to the City of Tustin for this?
So, because of the position of this island, it is considered under LAFCO terms that it is within the sphere of influence of the City of Santa Ana. The 55 freeway actually acts as a barrier, so the LAFCO has already made a determination that it resides within Santa Ana. The City of Tustin will continue to provide water services to this particular area.
Thank you for that. Any other question?
Kind of just following up, Mr., I'd rather move in my stated direction. Wouldn't it make, not that I'm offering it, but wouldn't it make sense for Santa Ana to, to provide all the services? I mean, we're already providing fire and police and sewer, and we're not going to provide water?
Correct. It is more effective and more efficient for a city to provide all services. However, the cost of the infrastructure to do the installation for water lines or the acquisition of the water lines is, is significant. So we are in discussions with Tustin as well. For the sake of the process to move forward, we're, the city is okay with having Tustin to continue to provide water services, but we are exploring to see if maybe we can inherit or purchase or if there's any mechanism by which we can provide water services in the future.
Well, if they want to fit the bill, I don't have a problem with that. At the same time, are we moving in a conversation with them, are we talking about language that would, you know, secure that service either by them or by us?
Right now, so LAFCO is asking Tustin to secure an out-of-area service agreement in order for them to provide water services. So Tustin currently provides water services to all the residential and commercial area currently.
At some point, this state Santa Ana doesn't want to take on that additional responsibility. 50 years from down the line, is Tustin still obligated to provide that service?
For water, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Cynthia?
I'm kind of at the same mindset of Mr. Alderetti. It would be interesting to see how many businesses are there, what's the revenue that it's creating and the property taxes from the homes that are there compared to what the cost is to put the lines in over time. Once you put the lines in, they're done, but how much are we going to lose yearly? I just think we're, we want to keep business in Santa Ana.
Absolutely.
Keep people here.
Absolutely.
And not give them away, so it's kind of hard to look at the whole picture when we don't have the numbers.
Currently, the property tax that are being estimated for this, for the entire island is about $19,000 is the general estimate. As from a commercial perspective, the businesses that are there are very, are small in nature. They do not generate substantial gross receipts or business license. One of the things that the city will, will gain once these food establishments are there because they are thinking of having a In-N-Out as well as a Chick-fil-A to open up in this area, is the city will generate now business license, utility users' tax, sales tax, a small portion of, of property tax as well.
Robert?
Just a last comment, and I love In-N-Out. I absolutely love In-N-Out, but I haven't eaten In-N-Out in I don't know how long because that line is outrageously crazy. As we're moving forward with that, obviously we need to keep that into consideration of that additional patronage at that, at that particular establishment, which is great, but we need to make sure that we keep the flow of traffic and safety into consideration.
Absolutely.
But it's a shame that I can't eat there anymore.
Thank you. Robert, the one thing is, for that open space that exists there, we have just two options that are being proposed at this point in time. There's nothing else being proposed.
Currently, so the vacant parcel is equivalent to about 3.3 acres.
Right.
And the two-foot establishments will take a good portion of that vacant land. There are some discussions because the owner of this vacant land that is in the unincorporated island is also the owner of the vacant land that's to the north of it. So there may be some discussions later on of additional development coming to that, to that area. But for now, it's only two food establishments.
Are there any other questions of staff at this-
Last one. Have, has anyone surveyed the residents and their thoughts of being annexed to Santa Ana?
Sure. So the city did conduct a public meeting or a community meeting with, with the community, and we had strong opposition from the community. They do not want to become City of Santa Ana. That meeting was held on the 19th. We provided information in terms of the services that they will be getting now if they do become City of Santa Ana, but at the end of the day, they did not, they voiced their concerns in terms of being viewed as City of Santa Ana.
Any other questions, comments? Robert, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Pardon?
We have not.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we'll open for public hearing. We are item number two. I have one card on item number two. Alan Rice.
My name's Alan Rice. I've lived in that island for many years. We went through this exact same process back in the year 2004, where I became the Vice President and then the President of the Local Homeowners Association specifically to fight this annexation. The, in 2004, of the 49 single-family residences, we surveyed all of them. There was one abstention and 49 were opposed to the annexation, or 48 correction. I hope we don't have to do this one more time to, or reorganize a homeowners association to, to fight this. We have, I have nothing against the City of Santa Ana, but we feel that we are much more closely aligned with Tustin. Our schools, our children go to Tustin Unified Schools, our water comes from there. We are far more closely aligned with that city than with Santa Ana, and it borders along one side of us. I understand about the sphere of influence. What this really looks like is that it's a case of trying to get the, the tax money from two fast food joints, fast food chains, and I'm going to go along with you, In-N-Out, there's an In-N-Out just right over here, and it backs out onto the street every single day so that it blocks up traffic, and this is not an intersection that can afford that. So even if you do annex us, please make sure that doesn't block up the streets. Oh, one other thing, there are members, there are people in this island who already get their sewer service from the City of Santa Ana, so I'm not understanding why LAFCO says that they have to, you have to annex the island just to provide sewer services for two fast food restaurants. People who live on Deodor have a Santa Ana sewer that runs down the front of the street and to do any property development like Home Edition or something like that, LAFCO requires that they attach the Santa Ana sewer that runs it down the street in front of them. My neighbor right here is one of them that had to do that. Anyway, I thank you and I would like to conclude by saying there is no support for the, by the residents there to be annexed by Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Is there anybody else at this time that would like to speak on item number two? If you would, could you state your name?
Hi, sure will. I'll fill out a card. My apologies. Peter Whittingham, actually speaking on behalf of both In-N-Out and Chick-fil-A. Appreciate the time, Chairman and Commissioners. Real quickly, as the gentleman stated, there is already sewer service provided by the city to a portion of this island. At the onset of the plan review process, the understanding and belief was that the Orange County Sanitation District would be actually providing sewer service to the undeveloped parcel at the corner. The sanitation district is actually getting out of the business of providing local sewer service and as such, turn to the City of Santa Ana to provide that sewer service. The dialogue that occurred between Santa Ana, LAFCO, what have you, was that they did not want to see an out-of-area service agreement, they wanted annexation. As Robert stated earlier, there is actually a portion of city property which is contiguous to the, the undeveloped parcel there that could potentially be a third potential use at that site somewhere down the road, but right now it's just contemplated for the In-N-Out and Chick-fil-A, which again, we're going, been through the planning process for more than a year. The queuing for both is notorious and definitely will be addressed and facilitated on-site. Back to the community meeting real quickly, there was several members of the community there who were very strident in their, their belief that they liked living, being in the county, served by the county or in Tustin. However, there was probably, I think I counted 22 people there total who weren't staff or what have you, et cetera, and there was probably only four people, five people who spoke. Again, very strident, et cetera, but the noticing was, did go out to the entire unincorporated island. There was not, again, more than five or six people who spoke. Again, very strident, very passionate about their, their preference to be there in Tustin or remain in the county, but I'll real quickly conclude with, there's probably 33 or 34 unincorporated islands within the county. It is a state mandate for every LAFCO to do everything in their power to address these small county islands and attempt to have them be served within a city. It just, for a variety of reasons, it is better governance, what have you, so this certainly perpetuates that, that goal and that desire. So unless you have any questions, thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter. Is there anybody else at this time that would like to speak on item number two? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry.
I apologize, Chair. I just wanted for the record, a correction, there was a public, a written public comment received which was distributed and posted on our website for viewing.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. Okay. I'd like to bring it back to the Commission for consideration on item number two. Eric?
Yeah, I'd like to, to recommend to the City Council that we adopt resolution approving general plan amendment 2018-04 to pre-designate the properties on the general plan, plan land use map attached to our packet, as well as adopt an ordinance approving amendment application 2018-07 to pre-zone properties to be consistent with the city's zoning designations.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it with a small friendly amendment, but just really want to be concerned about that In-N-Out and that traffic. So staff, if we could really take, take a consideration of what that looks like, because the other two establishments are phenomenal, but I believe they create a safety hazard and I would hate to see that in that same environment.
Eric?
Yeah, that, yeah, I accept that friendly amendment. Those two projects will come back to us at some point in the future, correct?
Those two projects are being processed in the county, but staff, city staff and will be approved in the county. City staff has had input into the development review process and has provided comments to county planning staff regarding those projects, particularly about traffic impacts.
Okay. Thank you. Lynette?
Before I vote, I just, I just-
Before I vote, I just had a concern. It doesn't sound like, for me, that the property taxes that we're going to collect on this area is a substantial amount of money on an annual basis. So it concerns me that we're going to be taking of this residential and commercial areas, and it might be costing us in the long run, longer, to provide services to them than we're going to actually gain from the commercial properties. I just don't feel like there's enough information in this packet to make me comfortable that in the long run, there's a benefit to the city of doing this. For some reason, Tustin doesn't want them, and I don't, why would be my question. If there's going to be some economic interest for them, why would they not want to be involved in the conversation? Maybe it's because of the services that we have to provide them, but I'm concerned that. To me, it's, if people don't want to be in Santa Ana, I get that, but if they're going to drain us of money from our budget, then I don't want them either. So that's where I'm coming from. I don't feel like there's enough information that I can make a very good economic decision.
Are you recommending to break back in two weeks?
No, no, no. I just, which in my opinion, I just probably, I won't be voting in favor of the motion. That's the only reason why, because I don't feel like I have enough.
With enough information?
Exactly. Yeah. To me, it's very important. I don't have a CBA attached to this, and I don't know what we're looking at in the long run by having to assume these properties from people that don't want to be part of our city.
Sure. And that is a great comment, great question, by the way. So Tustin, it's not that Tustin said that they do not want to annex, it's just it does not fall within their sphere of influence per Lafco guidelines. Hence, why Santa Ana? If these, if there's a desire to provide sewer services, we would need to annex. When we look at the fiscal condition of any area within the city, we are a municipal government, so we take a look at, is there an opportunity here for breakeven? But at the end of the day, our role is to provide good public service, and good local public policy dictates that annexation is a good thing for cities. And it's not, we're not looking at this strictly from a financial perspective, it's the provision of services. So one of the benefits that the community would receive is local representation at the same time, along with efficient delivery of services. So when we look at these, we look not only just at the finances, but we look at the overall perspective of good public policy.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So you brought up very good points. One of the reasons that motivated my motion was that this area is an ISO right now. That patch, although I understand that that will be developed, but it's not just the patch, the 3.4 acres, it's everything along E17. I guess that would be north of E17, those businesses there. And having lived in a county before, in a city, but within the county, an incorporated part of the county, I know that services, even permits, are difficult to get, especially if those, if the county building is not near where your home is. That's not the case here. But that's sort of what motivated what I was thinking behind it. And I did ask about the cost-benefit, but I didn't think we'd have anything close to numbers there.
Commissioner, that is one of the reasons why we look at this as good public policy, because it provides the City of Santa Ana an opportunity to control all four corners of this, of this street or intersection. It does become a gateway for the city. So if it remains an ISO because there's a decision or a desire to not annex, then it is what it is. But from a public standpoint, from a public policy standpoint, the administration brings forward these decisions to you for consideration.
Okay, at this time, we have a motion, but we don't have a second.
No, we don't have a second.
Any other discussion on this item? Cynthia? Okay. Again, I think what we are all asking the same question is, you know, relative to the finances of this, and hopefully, as we move forward with something like this, if we move forward, you know, we'll understand more about the finances sooner than later. About how long does the process itself take if we go through?
So the current timeline, based on the decision that is made today, so the assumption is that if it is approved, it goes to the City Council on November 20th. By November 20th, we have completed our financial analysis, or the economic analysis, and we will provide that to the City Council as well. One of the other things that we're including as part of the decision from the City Council is a reimbursement agreement, where we're asking the actual developer and owners of this parcel to compensate the city and reimburse the city for its efforts in this whole process. If it is approved by the City Council on November 20th, then it will go to the county potentially in December or potentially in January. It then takes Lafco about three months to go through their process. All indications with the county, as well as with Lafco, they all seem very positive and supportive of the annexation to move through. The county does not want to maintain any more islands. It is more costly for them to provide specific services to these pockets within different areas.
Let me understand one thing. Robert, please. I'd like to understand with regards to the sewage. It's my understanding, going through the packet, that the sewage is going to be handled by the city at this point in time? It's not going to be on the residents?
Sewer services will be provided by the city. Any infrastructure improvements to the development area where we have the vacant parcel will be paid for by the developer.
Okay, but the existing homes and multifamily dwellings that exist there today, they're on septic tanks, if they convert over to sewage, there's no cost for that, correct?
So if, there is Deodor, and then there's a cul-de-sac. Okay, so Deodor currently has a sewer line, and depending on when a septic tank fails, we are then required to have the owners of those properties then connect to the sewer line. When it comes to the actual cul-de-sac, which I believe is on Pasadena, I can't recall the name of the street, so the city would then fund the improvements through some type of funding source that would be coming through the county. So those are part of the discussions that we're having with the CEO of the county in terms of, how much money is it going to cost for us to actually do the improvements, and then get their commitment to make those payments on behalf of the city?
So the intent is to get that offset by the county as much as possible?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And that goes for not just the sewage?
And it's not just sewage. We're looking for any type of public work improvement, so lighting, trees, streets, sidewalks, ADA compliance.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Robert.
Sure.
Any further comments at this point in time? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Let's take a vote at this time. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No, no.
Okay, so we have three, two, and two abstained. Oh, two absent. Thank you. Okay, motion's approved. This is the time and the place to consider item number three, General Plan Amendment number 2018-05, to designate 325 North Tustin Avenue and 2321 East Fourth Street, and to general commercial amendment application number 2018-08, to rezone the properties at 301, 325, and 401 North Tustin Avenue, and 2320 East Fourth Street, to general commercial conditional use permit, number 2018-18, to allow a drive-through in variance, number in variance number 2018-10, to allow a reduction in landscape setbacks for the development of the gas stations, convenience store, and retail pad. Any Commissioners have anything to disclose at this time? No? Okay. Selena, you ready?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Commission. Tonight, we have another development project proposed on the east side of town on Tustin Avenue at Fourth Street. Thanks for the introduction of the proposed actions, and I'll go into the detailed project description. So the applicant is proposing to demolish an existing restaurant in order to construct a new approximately 7,300 square foot multi-tenant commercial building with a drive-through window services, service at 301 North Tustin Avenue. In addition, the property owner is proposing to demolish an existing gas station and convenience store and car wash in order to construct a new convenience store and gas station, and eliminate the car wash services at 325 North Tustin Avenue. When looking at the applications, which I'll go into more detail, the existing zoning and existing general plan designations of the subject properties and uses, there were inconsistencies between those three things, the uses, the general plan, and zoning. So with this application, the city is initiated as part of the general plan amendment and amendment application to change some of the zoning and general plan designations of the adjacent properties to create a general commercial corridor. So we'll spend some time here on the aerial photo to provide some context of the subject properties. Again, it's on the east side of Tustin Avenue and on the north and south sides of Fourth Street, and also adjacent to the 55 freeway and the city of Tustin. There are five subject properties that this proposal would impact tonight, and the development, properties that are proposed for development are only two of them, which are shown in the area of blue. In the areas in green, there's no proposed development. Those are properties in which the city will be doing basically a cleanup of the general plan and zoning. So here you can see some site photos of the developments, properties proposed for development. This would be 325 North Tustin Avenue, which is at the corner, and then the parcel directly to the south, which is 301 North Tustin Avenue. Both of these sites would be scraped clean and developed with new buildings and site plans. The, here you can see a comparison of the development standards for our commercial zone in comparison to the two subject properties. The new retail building will comply with the city's development standards, however, it does require a conditional use permit for the drive-through window service. And the gas station property complies with the development standards, with the exception of our yard standards. This is landscaped areas. The city's requirement is 15 feet on each side, so it's a corner lot that would be 15 feet of landscaped area along Tustin and 15 feet along Fourth Street, and the applicant is proposing landscaped areas, which in some cases do meet the 15-foot requirement, but it does taper down to 5 feet 6 inches in other areas in order to provide onsite circulation. So here you can see the site plans. North is oriented, has an orientation label on the site plan, so you'll have to kind of readjust visually. The gas station convenience store will be at the corner, back corner, and the retail building will also be in the back of the properties, adjacent to the freeway, with the drive-through wrapping around the backside of the building, and parking spaces for both developments provided onsite. So here you can see some renderings of the two buildings. It would incorporate contemporary design with smooth plaster finishes, metal canopies, wood tile. In addition, a pedestrian connection between the two buildings and enhanced landscaping throughout the development site. Here is the floor plan of the new commercial building and drive-through, and the elevations, and the elevations and floor plan of the service station building. And now I'll go into one of the applications before you tonight, and this is the General Plan Amendment. The two, the properties are currently designated professional administrative office and general commercial, and the two properties, one shown in blue and one shown in green, are proposed to be changed to general commercial. The amendment application would be that the zoning, existing zoning of the subject properties are a mix of professional and commercial. So for three subject properties, we're proposing to amend the zoning from professional to commercial. A conditional use permit application is required for any drive-through within the city. The drive-through lane is set back approximately 100 feet from Fourth Street, and so the main building would be what was seen, the predominant view from the street. The drive-through does meet the city's stacking requirement, which is 80 feet from the menu board and 80 feet from the window pickup area, to provide adequate queuing for vehicles onsite. The speaker boxes are oriented towards, at the rear, are placed at the rear of the building and oriented towards the freeway to reduce any noise impacts, and the adjacent uses are commercial in nature with no nearby residential uses. And the variance application in regards to landscaped yards, again, 15 feet is required, and you can see in the areas circled in red are approximately 5 feet 6 inches. It's also important to note that as part of the development site, the site plans are distributed to various city agencies, our Public Works Agency being one of them, and that an eight-foot dedication is required along Fourth Street and a two-foot dedication is required along Tustin Avenue. This area would then allow the streets to be configured to the ultimate right-of-way, but would require a reduction in the area for those, for the property owner in order to construct their development. In addition, there is an existing gas station on the side, as I mentioned, and that has underground storage tanks which store the fuel for use. Those underground storage tanks are currently placed at the north corner of the property, and the applicant's proposing to utilize as existing storage tanks. As we know, there are large tanker field trucks associated with gas stations to refuel those tanks, and that needs adequate space onsite in order to maneuver and refuel those tanks. So if variance is not provided, the applicant would actually have to dig up or relocate those underground storage tanks, or it may result in inadequate site circulation for refueling of those tanks. There are a lot of applications before you tonight, and the subject areas are approximately four acres in total in regards to the five properties and the two proposed for development. With that, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. It included technical studies and a traffic impact analysis. It was circulated for a 30-day public review. There were public comments received from public agencies, and a response to comments were included. There were no new impacts based on the comments that were received that would require any new analysis or recirculation of the document. And with mitigation measures included for cultural resources, resources, hazards, and tribal and cultural resources, there would be no significant impacts as a result of the project. So with that, that concludes Staff's presentation, and we recommend that the Planning Commission recommend items for City Council consideration, and that the Planning Commission recommend approval for the conditional use permit and variance applications.
Thanks, Selena. Does the Commission have any questions of staff? Robert?
A couple of questions for you. As they're looking to make some adjustments to the gas station, will they have to be following the Brownfields Act?
Yes. So they have a current letter in regards to the state of the gas station, and back, I think in the 2000s, and the property owner is here, I should know, and can probably provide more information, they did bring their property into compliance in regards to the underground storage tanks for any leakages or things like that.
You know how old those tanks are?
The property owner may have that information, or the applicant. And I also just, in regards to that, want to note that the SECA consultant is here also if you have any questions of them.
Great. They're not asking for any parking variances? We're good with the parking?
No, they're not asking for any parking variances. They meet the parking standards for commercial properties for the subject uses. They are going to be, which is included as a condition of approval for the applications and reciprocal access and parking, so you can actually park between the two sites.
You mentioned that there's five of sites that are going to be affected, but they're only going to actually develop two of them. Are we anticipating some additional development on the other three?
Not at this time. The, one of the subject properties is a Del Taco, and it would be zoned, it's currently zoned professional, which allows for office, so rezoning that to commercial would be consistent with the land use, and any development on that site that requires any discretionary action would be brought forward to the Planning Commission. The other subject properties on the north side of the street is an existing service station, which is zoned professional, would be brought to, rezoned to commercial, consistent with the land use and any development on that. Again, if it required discretionary actions, would come forward to the Planning Commission. And the third property that's not proposed for development is a commercial retail center, and it was most recently redeveloped, so, but if they were to come in with any new improvements that require Commission's approval, it would be improvements that require commission's approval, it would become before you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a question for staff? Eric?
Hi, thank you. Does the traffic study, do you know, does that account for queuing at the drive-through?
The traffic does not account for queuing. They did look at the site plan in order to see if it's like adequate circulation. Queuing is something that we talk about, again, with our zoning code requirements, which requires 80 feet from the menu board, so it's approximately four cars and 80 feet from the pickup window. This drive-through length is, actually provides for 15 cars to queue.
Now, we would see this project, if it ever gets proposed, meaning whoever the tenant would be, and that would come back to the commission?
It would not. That's the action that's before you tonight with the conditional use permit for the drive-through.
Okay, okay. Do we know who that applicant or who that tenant is?
Not at this time. The property owner may have some more information. I know they're trying to attract tenants in, in marketing the property, but obviously want to know if, if the uses will be approved before that.
I think it's less likely it's going to be in and out, because there's going to be one a quarter mile away, but you never know. The other question I had was about the, the variance for the 5 feet 6-inch landscape setback. Is, that seems pretty minimal. Have we done that in the past? And I'm not saying dismissing it outright, it just seems that, that either that's got to be some really amazing landscaping for that to happen, or maybe we've set a precedent for that in the past.
In regards to the size of 5 feet?
Yeah. Which is 15 normally, it's 5, 5 feet here, 5 feet 6 inches.
I'd have to see if there, I know we have done variances for landscaped yards. I'm not sure if the number goes down to 5 feet, but that is a sized planter that we can see significant plantings, trees within that area.
And the reason why I bring it up, because we had talked on the last project about 17th being a gateway, well, 4th Street is also a gateway, especially at Fourth and Tustin, so. Anyway, that's it. No more questions.
I just want to comment on the setback. I thought I read in the docket that the setback in part was due to the fact that getting the, refueling the tanks, the trucks had to get to a certain distance, and that's why the setback wasn't, was being proposed at 5 feet. Is that true or not?
That is correct. So if you can take a look here at this plan, these three circles here are where the, the tanks currently are below, and that's where they would need to refill. So you can see it's pretty close to this corner here, and if you had a 15-foot setback on each side, the field trucks would not be able to enter and exit into the site.
That's the current Chevron site, right?
Current.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you, Selena. Would the applicant at this time like to make comments?
Good evening. Morse was just here to kind of answer any questions. You guys, I know you had a couple about the...
Could you, could you identify?
I'm sorry, I'm Chase Russell, the property owner.
All right, good enough.
Curious about how old those tanks are, because I know it's been so many years you got to replace them.
Yeah, so they're...
The accident kick in.
Yeah, they're supposed to be, they were pulled out after 1991, which is the regulation. There's a note for their action letter on the property right now, so there's zero contamination. All tanks are double walled. As far as the date, I think it was done in the late 90s. We purchased the site in 2015.
Any other questions of applicant? Okay, Chase, have you got anything that you'd like to say, or?
No, thank you for your time.
Actually, just one question. I had asked staff about the tenant. Do you know who the tenant for the drive-through would be?
Who do you want?
Oh, I, I can actually think of one, but it would be a conflict of interest.
Yes, right.
So...
I could see that one coming.
Yeah, you could see that one coming. But, no, I was just curious. Because we, there's been so much discussion, this, not just at this meeting, but about in and out being great, but having challenges. That's a good point.
I can tell you it's not in and out.
Okay, I kind of figured, given the... Okay, all right, thanks.
Yep.
All right? All said?
Thank you, guys.
Chase?
Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. I have two cards here. Chase, you're one, so I'm assuming we're good. Or would you like to speak?
The notes, just for answering the question.
Richard Finkel?
I'm the architect. I'm available to answer any technical or functional question.
Okay. Any questions of the architect at this time? None? Is there anyone else at this point that would like to speak on item number three? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to the commission. Lyne?
I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the City Council that we, the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration of environmental review number 2016-156, and we, the adoption of a resolution approving general plan amendment 2018-05, adoption ordinance, approving amendment application 2018-08, and that the Planning Commission adopt resolutions approving conditional use permit number 2018-18 as conditioned, and approving variance 2018-10 as conditioned.
Second by Cynthia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 5-0 with two absences. This time and place to consider item number four, variance number 2018-09, to allow the construction of a 15-foot-high by 8-foot-wide freestanding monument sign for a shopping center located at 3300 South Bristol Street. Do any commissioners have anything to disclose at this time? Okay? Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Before you, is an application for a variance for a freestanding monument sign for the Bristol Center, Bristol Place, located on South Bristol, 3300. As you mentioned, this is to construct a 15-foot-tall freestanding sign, and the variance is to request for the height. As part of the project, staff analyzed the overall site. There has been some improvements, and I'll go over that, and the staff report indicates large reinvestment into the, the property there by new tenants and improvements on the site. But as part of the project, we also required them to bring all signage up to, up to current standards of the municipal code. So they have submitted a sign program to address all signage included, including the one before you this evening. And additionally, another monument sign will be constructed, but that would be on the secondary frontage, and I'll show you where. So this is the site location. It's on Alton and Bristol Street. As a lot of people don't really know, it's, it's the Bristol Place, but everyone calls it the Chicken Maison location. So that's located on the corner. And so the star indicates the location of the proposed 15-foot freestanding monument sign. It's currently zoned C4, planned shopping center, so that's consistent, and the district center, general plan designation is also consistent. And it's surrounded by residential to the west, and commercial shopping centers, integrated shopping centers similar to this one, pretty much throughout Bristol, the corridor there. And so this is a site plan that was provided by the applicant. In the blue, you'll, you'll see the location of the entrance. That's where we measure the 15 by 15-foot triangle. And then the red will show, this is on Bristol, the red will show the location of the proposed monument sign. And then the secondary sign will be to the north of the property on Alton, and that sign will meet all code requirements. It's not coming before you for a decision tonight. And so this is a elevation of the proposed sign. It's, as you mentioned, 15 foot in height. It'll also allow for additional signage for the anchor tenant, which is Target, and has been there for a number of years, and also makes available additional signage location for all the new tenants that are coming in. The design of this sign is to incorporate all the improvements that the site's been taking in through the months, previous months, and so the colors, the materials, those, those palettes, color palettes have been taken into consideration to reflect the consistency. And so this is the location, the proposed location for the freestanding monument sign. It'll replace the existing one there at Target on Bristol and the, the intersection of the light. And so part of the project is to understand the location, understand the context of the proposal and the application before you, and so this, this integrated shopping center has been an integrated shopping center since 1986. It met all current, at the time, it met all requirements of the municipal code, and as times change, you know, it's, it's also trying to keep up with that and keep up with the neighboring shopping centers, and so they're proposing this to kind of keep in competition with the rest of them. So as mentioned, the rest of the requirements per code, per signed code are met, it's just the height of the sign. And so I've listed a few of those there, street frontage and primary location on the street, maximum width, it's all within that. And so the application before you is a variance to allow for the sign up to the 15-foot height. And so that concludes staff's presentation. We recommend that you approve variance number 2018-9 as conditioned. I am happy to answer any questions. Our applicant is also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Just the commission, Cynthia?
So the one that's 15 feet high, is that the one on Alton and Bristol, on the corner right in front of?
It'll be on Bristol, so just to show the location, the one on the right side on Bristol, where you see the two red and blue lines, I know it's a little bit hard to shrink these site plans, but the, the main, the primary street frontage will be on Bristol, and that's where this location is required by code, and it'll be proposed there. And then the secondary sign, which is on the exit, right by the corner building, that's where the other monument sign will be, and that one will meet code requirements.
And the taller one, is that just going to be Target, or is it also going to have the other?
So it'll, it'll offer up eight spaces, as you see in the image, for all the other tenants, and that's up to property manager to select. So as we take them in, then the spaces will cancel out.
Roman?
Have we given any other variances to signs such as this? Is there another example in Santa Ana that we've already done?
I believe there was one on the Hobby Lobby Shopping Center, but I didn't use that as a, as a reference for this project. I didn't research that, but I believe that the one where the, was it Gold's Gym prior to the new? And so I believe that one might have gone through a variance to request it because of the, the size of the parcels, the integrated shopping center. But no recent ones.
The only other one I could think of was Kia.
Oh, the, that went through a different, yeah.
But the Kia is the LED sign.
Mm-hmm.
But that's...
That's a separate.
Completely different standards. Yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions? Lyne?
I just had a question. The conditions don't include any, and there's nothing in regards to the landscape around the signage. I mean, it says maintain the sign, but it doesn't say anything about the landscape around it, and it just says that they, they have an updated sign program, this must be submitted, but there doesn't anything, is that part of the, the property renovation that that comes with it, or do we need to condition something here?
So the maintenance, your first question is to address the maintenance of the landscaping? That's already in our code, that it needs to be maintained. It's not part of this application, so it falls back on the sign regulations.
When they install the new sign, I assume that they're going, it's going to take up some of the landscaping area, and then what's going to happen with the rest of it? Is there, is there a landscape plan for how the rest of that little area around the sign is going to look? And you might hate for it just to be, put the sign up there and some grass around it, and it's, you know, that's it.
So as part of the review for the, the center or the overall improvements, there hasn't been a landscape plan submitted? It's pretty much tenant improvements for the, the units and partitions to create additional suites. So no landscape plan has been formally submitted, to my knowledge. I know that there is another, a couple other planners that have worked on some of these minor tenant improvements at the counter, but as far as this application for the landscaping, we normally review, when the submittal is make it, is made at the counter, we review that it meets the rest of the requirements, so like the 4-foot landscaping buffer on all sides, that sort of thing. But we don't go into detail as to the type of plants. That, that usually gets triggered by usually large improvements or major buildings, and so we start to look at the water efficiency landscape ordinance requirements and drought tolerant landscaping. So some of that also is when the, the property owner comes in and wants to redo the entire landscaping.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I understand that. My concern, you said, without something like this, for this particular area that I'm, you know, aware of, that without us making or forcing them to do something like that, then it's just going to be like, okay, put the bigger sign up there and leave everything else around there, the way it is. And I was just trying to make, see if we can, out of this, get a little bit more improvements in that, in that landscaping area, to make it a little bit more enticing.
So staff didn't include conditions, but it comes before you as an item, and I believe you can make those recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm thinking...
Thank you.
Would the applicant at this time like to make a comment?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joey. I work for the property owner as representative, and to go off of what Commissioner just mentioned, we're happy to accept any landscape conditions that you might want to add to the, to the approval of this project. Was there any other questions that you have?
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Joey.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
Yes, and it was distributed to the commission.
Thank you. We are now open for the public hearing. I do not have any cards. Is anybody at this point in time, would anybody like to make a comment on this item? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion on this item number four?
I'm looking to approve.
I'm asking for a motion.
Did you want to motion?
I want you to approve.
No, here, I'll do it. Go ahead.
Can you? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance number 2018-09, to allow 15-foot-tall freestanding sign for the Bristol Place Shopping Center, 3300 South Bristol Street. But I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Verino and possibly just add a condition that they add some kind of, you know, maybe flowers around the bottom of it or something, also to keep away people from leaning on it and so forth. Sometimes you can create that space for it with some pretty flowers, just something to make it look nice, so. To add some landscaping.
That might also prevent people from going up to, doing graffiti on the sign as well.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Eric? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
5-0, two absences. This is time and place to consider item number five, conditional use permit number 2018-19, conditional use permit number 2018-20, and variance number 2018-11, to allow an eating establishment with drive-through service, after-hours operation, and a driveway within 150 feet of an intersection at 2301 North Tustin Avenue. Do we have any questions that we can disclose at this time?
Good evening, commission. We have another project here before you along Tustin Avenue. This is at Tustin and Santa Clara. The application is a proposal to construct a new 3,567-square-foot building with drive-through window service. It's proposed for space for two tenants, one which would be Starbucks, and one is an unknown tenant, which may be a retail or eating establishment, or another use that's allowed, permitted per the commercial zone. The adjacent property at 2151 East Santa Clara Avenue is also proposed to be merged with the development site, and the existing convenience store building facade would be enhanced with materials that match the new proposed building to create a appearance of a cohesive development site. The applications before you tonight are a conditional use permit to allow for a restaurant with drive-through window service, a conditional use permit to allow for the drive-through to operate 24 hours per day, which is within 150 feet of residential uses, and a variance to allow a driveway to be located... to allow a driveway to be located within 150 feet of the corner intersection of Tustin and Santa Clara avenues. So here you can see an aerial and vicinity map of the subject site shown in red. It's at the northeast corner. The property to the north and to the west are commercial, also to the south. And the residential properties that are within 150 feet are to the east of the subject site. Here are some photos, photos. It's currently a vacant lot, and these are views of the site from both Tustin and Santa Clara avenues. And the adjacent parcel at 2151 East Santa Clara is an existing convenience store. It does have a valid conditional use permit for the monopine, which is just west of the building. The existing pylon sign is added as a condition of approval to be removed, as it doesn't conform with our development standards for the city. And there are two driveways that go to this site, and the driveway to the east adjacent to the residential is actually a shared driveway and provides access to the convenience store and also to the commercial property to the north through a reciprocal access agreement. So here's the proposed site plans before you. The new building is shown on the left here with Starbucks and the drive-through, and the new retail tenant and the existing commercial building. The sites would be merged together. And here you can see the proposed elevations for Starbucks. It's a contemporary design with earth tones and 360-degree architecture. The existing convenience store would remove that stucco and provide wood tiles and green screens that match the new proposed building. And the project with, is within the general commercial zone and has general commercial, general plan designation. Does comply with the development standards with, of that zone in regards to setbacks, parking, building heights, floor area ratio, et cetera. It does not comply with the driveway requirements for C5 properties. With that, it, within that zone, no entryway or exitway, so a driveway, shall be located within 150 feet of any intersection of a street corner. This proposed driveway is approximately 110 feet from the, or a proposed driveway is approximately 110 feet from the intersection. So I'll go through the discretionary actions before you. The first one would be the drive-through window service. So pursuant to the code, a CUP is required. The drive-through lane does meet the city's stacking requirements, again, the 80 feet and 80 feet, and would allow for approximately eight vehicles to queue without disrupting any parking or drive aisles on the site. The drive-through is also designed to generate minimal noise impacts. The speaker boxes are located at the rear of the drive-through lane and would project towards the commercial building to the north. In addition, it's important to note that the existing convenience store serves as a buffer between the new building and any, and the nearby residential uses. So the drive-through lane is at the rear of the site, and the building would be the prominent view from the street. The code requirements for, in regards to after-hours operations, require a conditional use permit for any eating establishments within 150 feet of any residentially zoned or used properties. And that would be to operate between the hours of 12, any time between the hours of 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM. The property to the east is an apartment complex known as Latitude Apartment Homes. And as measured when the, from property line to property line, it's actually going to be adjacent to the subject sites once they're merged, and within 150 feet. Those apartment homes are actually approximately 180 feet away from the new building. And the applicant is proposing for 24-hour operations of the drive-through, not the store. The store will be closed at whatever time per Starbucks, and also before 12:00 AM per our code. And they're not looking to operate the store for business customers at that time, just through, for drive-through. For any after-hours applications, the police department does review those applications, and the police is not opposed to the after-hours operations at this site. They did provide data and statistics in regards to the number of incidents and calls in the area and also for the block. And it's in a, an area that receives a minimal calls for police services. In regards to driveways proximity to street corners, this is something unique to our C5 arterial zone, which does not allow for a driveway within 150 street, 150 feet of a street corner intersection. The subject site that would have the new building is approximately 125 feet by 125 feet. Therefore, any new driveway that's proposed to be utilized would require a variance from our code along Tustin Avenue. In addition, it's important to note that the previous use of the vacant site was a gas station. So there are currently four driveway cuts that are existing. Three of those would be closed and replaced with curb and sidewalk and city street trees. And the applicant is proposing again to utilize one driveway on Tustin Avenue that's approximately 110 feet from the street intersection. Starbucks is requesting this driveway in order to capture customers traveling on both Tustin and Santa Clara avenues, in, in order to provide patrons with direct access to the site on Tustin. In addition, the property owner did contact the property owner to the north to see if they could share the driveway and provide reciprocal access. And that property was, owner was not interested in providing that access to this development site. The recommended actions are, there are three recommended actions for the planning commission, and that concludes staff presentation. If you have any questions. And the applicant is also here as well.
Does the commission have any questions of the staff? Eric?
Thank you. Do you know any 24-hour drive-throughs eating establishments we have in the city?
I don't have the total number.
Are there any other Starbucks that are?
The Starbucks on 17th and Tustin does operate, have 24-hour operations of the drive-through.
Yeah, I know it. Okay, thank you. Just a quick question on that, on that one on 17th and Tustin. What's the closest residential? I know there's a LA Fitness there. I don't know if those are apartments out there.
It's businesses.
But is it 180?
I do not believe there's any residential within 150 feet, and it doesn't have a CUP for that specific requirement.
Selena, I couldn't tell from the renderings. The box, the, the drive-up order box, is that, that, that won't be facing the residential, correct?
Correct. It's approximately where my, the cursor is shown, right here at, at the rear. So, and this is a commercial property to the north.
And the residential's?
The residential's to the east on this side where the cursor is.
So if, if someone's ordering, they're, they're going, the, the volume will be going towards the business behind it?
Yes, the commercial building is adjacent to this property then, right where the cursor is shown, and also the pickup window is, is on that north side of the building as well.
Okay, thank you.
So the current convenience store is the upper right-hand corner?
Correct.
Can you just point out where the residential is again?
It's here to the east. So there's a shared driveway that actually provides access to this property to the north. There's a four-foot block wall, and then residential apartments. Here's the aerial photo probably I could show you too. So here's the subject site with Starbucks on here, the existing convenience store, and then the apartment homes.
Any other questions of Selena's staff? Thank you. Would the applicant at this point in time like to say something?
Good evening, commissioner, and fellow members of the planning commission. My name is Ralph Deppish. I was hired by the ownership to assist them in developing this project. It's been about a year of collaborative effort with the city to come up with what we believe is a very viable and attractive project for the community, providing services and positive economic impact as well as future employment. And both my client, the landowner, Mr. Rego, and our architect are here as well to support me in our efforts to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions of the applicant at this time? No? Thank you, Ralph. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
Yes, and that was distributed to the commission.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to speak on item number five, please come forward. Ralph, I have you here as one speaker, so I'm assuming you're done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Gail Price?
Good evening. My name is Gail Price. Please have some patience with me. This is, public speaking is not my forte. But I do have some concerns about some of the services, and not necessarily just the Starbucks. I have lived in the neighborhood for 20 years, and I live on the west side on Santa Clara. The area that you're talking about is truly not just commercial. I live within a three-minute walk to that Starbucks. And in general, we, we have several concerns as I've talked with people. First of all, that area has tremendous traffic. And my concern, of course, is the fact that I live so close on Santa Clara. There is record of many, many consistent accidents on Santa Clara and Tustin. It is an accident-prone area. Sometimes there are three in a month, sometimes there's one in a month. But it is consistent that there are a number of accidents, and it's recorded. There are three Starbucks within, approximately within a three-mile range. There is one, as you've talked about, on Tustin and 17th Street. I don't exactly know. There's another one that's almost across the street, within a half a mile of that one towards the east off of San, 17th Street. There's also another Starbucks on Grand and 17th Street. I am aware that there is a 24-hour window on Tustin and Cent, and 17th Street. I don't believe that the other Tustin that's just east of that off of 17th Street is a 24-hour one. I'm, I'm not sure. In all honesty, I frequent all of those. But when it comes to being next to where I live, it's a little bit of a different consideration. I am really concerned, gravely concerned about the increase of traffic in that area in general, let alone on the street that I live on. That is my greatest concern. The other concern that we have, I live in a, in a complex that is three properties from the corner. And the constant complaints that we're dealing with in the HOA is the number of homeless that walk through our property continuously. We do not have a gate, but we have always, we continuously apply for a variance to be able to put up a gate. But so far, that has not been granted. So until that's granted, we are particularly vulnerable to homeless walking through our properties at all hours of the night. I'm gravely concerned that more homeless will be attracted to our particular site, and we are vandalized continuously. Police protection has been minimal, and the vandalization is almost instant, and merchandise, and cars, merchandise thrown over fences, and there's no one there to arrest, even if the police were almost there instantly. Multiple cars broken into. Mine has been vandalized a couple of times myself.
Can you wrap up, Gail, please? You've got three minutes.
Okay. That's really what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gail.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else at this point in time that would like to make a comment? If you would, come on up and identify yourself, and then please fill out a card when you're done.
Hello, my name is Paul Dunn. I live in the same area as Gail, and my major concern is traffic. On, it's a very fast speed there, because there's no actual housing very close to where that is, so they build up a lot of speed. There is lots of accidents there. But what's, what I think what the biggest problem is, we don't have protected turns from Santa Clara onto Tustin, onto Tustin Avenue, north and south. So the accidents we have there with the speeding of the traffic on Tustin Avenue, they're pretty severe. It's not like a, the, it's very, very quick. And if you do grant the, the Starbucks, I think it would create more accidents without having something like a protected turn going north and south from Santa Clara onto Tustin Avenue. That's really it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would, could you check, excuse me, would you go with the secretary and fill out a card so that she has that for the record?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak on item number five? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion from the commission?
Can I ask a question, Selena?
Go ahead.
Selena, is there, is there, Selena, are there not turning lanes on Santa Clara? Or I know there are turning lanes on Tustin onto Santa Clara. Are there turning lanes on Santa Clara?
Tay.
So the question is, are there right turn lanes on Santa Clara?
So if you're at Santa Clara and you're, and you want to go left onto Tustin Avenue, in either direction, is there, is there turning lane signals?
There are turning lanes, left turn lanes, but they're not protected.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's lanes, but are there, are there signals?
They're not, they're not protected lefts. So yeah, you don't get the left arrow.
Okay. And, okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion on this item?
Oh, can I just, I just wanted to bring up something.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I do, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of traffic. There's, there's high-velocity traffic on Tustin Avenue. The, the cars are, you know, flying down Tustin Avenue. It's a very busy, busy area. That intersection, I'm sure, is vulnerable to, to accidents. But I, I don't think that building this development is going to result in, in, in more. I think that the issue is that people, we need to slow them down. I'm not really, you know, exactly sure how that happens. But if we in fact don't have left-hand signals at Santa Clara, that, there is sort of a little recipe for disaster, because if, if you're coming out of the drive-through, and I think most people want to go onto Santa Clara because it's less busy, and then to go left onto Tustin Avenue, that, and, and now we're letting that happen all, all hours of the day, I think that can be problematic. So I would be, I would like to see, and I don't know if we could impose that on the development, to put those left turn lanes from Santa Clara at those signals.
Is, is that something that we would have to request Public Works to do at this point in time, or how would we approach that? Because I, I don't think it's the applicant or the developer that's responsible for that.
We, but, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know what the cost factor is, but, I mean, if there's any way to, to
Share.
Yeah, share that cost. I think that that would not only help slow down traffic, but it'd also help their, their patronage at their place if people are more comfortable coming out and being able to turn left and, you know, do a drive-through, come out onto Santa Clara, take a left back onto Tustin Avenue, and be on their way to the freeway.
Yeah.
Much safer than going to that drive-through over on 17th and Tustin, which is always backed up and, and horrible trying to get on the freeway from there.
Yeah, I guess before I answer that, I just want to give you a
Yeah, I guess before I answer that, I just want to give you a little bit of information. That, that particular intersection, you know, based on our studies, isn't any more dangerous than any other arterial, arterial intersection. I mean, citywide, we are trying to do what we can to minimize vehicular condition, collisions, and pad and bike collisions at all intersections. We, we also do have a list of, a priority list of left-turn arrow intersections, traffic signal modifications. I don't know where, whether or not Santa Clara and Tustin is on that list. It's something certainly we can, we can analyze to determine whether or not it's warranted, whether or not the left-turn arrows would be warranted. I guess to get to your question of whether or not there could be a contribution, a fair share contribution by the developer, I mean, that's something we can, we can certainly examine and, and work with them to do. I imagine if I'm the developer, I would want to know kind of what, you know, what kind of cap I'd be looking at.
Right. That would be good. Thank you.
How about looking at it and to minimize the backlog of people wanting to go left when they're exiting onto Tustin or Santa Clara, going against the traffic to make that left? What if the exits were only right turns on both exits? Then you, either it takes you to Santa Clara, or it takes you on, I mean, to Tustin or Santa Clara, and you can make a right to get onto Tustin?
Yeah, so we can, we can certainly sign at both, at both locations, right-turn arrows.
That way we're avoiding that.
Right-turn only. I think still the Commissioner Barino's concern was, I guess cars going, exiting Santa Clara, and then if they want to go south on Tustin, they quickly get into that lane, and then they, they turn south. So they would still be able to do that even if it was right-only out of the, out of the driveway on Santa Clara. Yeah, so those are my thoughts.
So, question of, refresh my memory on the, on the driveway itself. That's on Santa Clara, correct?
There would be two driveways, one on Santa Clara and one on North Tustin. And there is another driveway that's a shared driveway, so it's required to be there with the site to the north.
So the one that the variance is being requested, is that the one on North Tustin? Is that?
Yes, so the variance is on North Tustin. The driveway on Santa Clara is more than 150 feet from the intersection. So the variance would be, again, on, to answer your question, yes, on North Tustin.
I mean, the concern that I, that I have with that particular area is from Santa Clara, just past the strip mall that's there with the State of Brothers. I mean, if there's anything that is accident-prone, that is a bad section because you technically can't come out of, for instance, Ace Hardware and turn left, but people do that. And, you know, now you're going to put a entryway on Tustin Avenue going in there. People are going to come out of that entryway, and they're going to try to get across to, they're going to try to get across Tustin Avenue. I think that's where it's going to get a little bit crazy. Because right now, it's considered, if you look at the lines, if I'm not mistaken today, the lines are set up as if it's an island. So you can't technically go in there.
Yeah, so it, it should be an illegal left coming out of there. So you wouldn't be able to go southbound. Yeah, you're not supposed to be able to go southbound on Tustin Avenue.
Yeah, but there's no signage, for instance, there's no signage at the Ace Hardware in that, the tire shop that falls into the same category. It shouldn't be a left-hand turn. It should only be a right-hand turn.
Yeah, well, I guess short of, short of putting a median there, I mean, we, there are other things we can do, too. I mean, sometimes we can do a little pork chop island on-site, which, which would kind of force folks to go left or right. But in general, if we, if we put a, you know, I think, we can either do that. We can either put a pork chop island on, on-site, so we direct folks to go left or right, or we do it with signage. You know, where we, where we sign folks.
I think that would have to also apply, I mean, I think it applies to the two exits that are existing, the one exit that's existing there, and then now you're introducing a second entry and, you know, entry and exit, which is short, you know, it's 110 feet right there. I think that's going to cause some challenges, too.
Pardon me? Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can, we could apply it at both, at both locations, at both driveways.
All right. Any other questions of staff?
I'd just like to note that I'd like the applicant to discuss what conditions they'd be willing to accept as well in regards to the application.
Okay, well, let's see what we come up with as far as conditions at this point in time. Do we have a motion on this item, or further discussion?
I, I, I mean, I don't want to have to put the applicant on the spot at this very moment, but I would, I would like them to have a discussion with staff about those, you know, those options. So I would not have a problem if we, if we, moving this, or continuing this for a couple of weeks, to give them the opportunity for their architect to meet with Public Works and staff to try to see if they can mitigate some of the things we brought up today.
Okay. So you have a motion to continue this item at this point in time?
Yeah, I would motion that.
Okay, do we have a second?
This is the applicant in agreement to...
Could we continue that to October 22nd? Did I hear that? I needed a date specific so we don't have to renotice.
Oh, absolutely, October 22nd, the next, the next meeting?
Thank you.
She said the next meeting, so let's say it's October 22nd.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, if the staff can, and the applicant can, can meet those timelines, then it'd be, be good.
Go ahead, you can make a comment, it's fine.
One of the reasons that Starbucks was interested in this site was to offload some of the business it's doing on Seventeenth and Tustin, and to minimize the challenges of that site and the concerns that you've expressed. Also, the second, another reason for this site was that it was going to work traffic, and that it is not a traffic generator in a destination location as much, as more than it is convenience. And it's not uncommon to develop a site and going to work traffic. So most of the customer would be coming off of Tustin. There would hardly be minimal increase in traffic coming from East Santa Clara to this property, other than those who travel that street in their normal practice. To propose a pork chop kind of a condition due to the fact that we have minimal whiffs to support the Public Works in not having the large curb cuts would be problematic in allowing egress and ingress off of Tustin as well as Santa Clara. And so I would be very concerned about that condition and its ability to service the, the services in particular Starbucks. And I would just ask that you may reconsider your thoughts and concerns as it relates to what was expressed by a few constituents of the trade area of the community in light of what I have just said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion to continue item five at this time until 10:22 with a second from Cynthia. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero, two, absent. This is the time and place to consider item number six, conditional use permit 2001, 2018-21, to allow an existing 60-foot-tall wireless communication facility located at 2200 East McFadden Avenue. Do the commissioners have anything to disclose at this time? Okay. Staff, would you like to present?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the commission. I have before you CUP application number 2018-21 for a wireless facility renewal located at 2200 East McFadden Avenue. The applicant is proposing to re-entitle an existing 60-foot-high major wireless communication facility. They are not proposing any expansions of the facility with this submittal, and it requires an issuance of a new CUP to continue the use of the wireless facility. The site is located in a light industrial zone. It has a general plan designation of industrial and is surrounded by commercial and residential uses. This is the site plan. The circle highlights the locate, the existing location of the wireless facility and enclosures. This is an image of the site. So as far as for the project, the project requires a new CUP to extend the life of the major wireless communication facility for another 10 years. As existing, the wireless communication facility meets the standards of the Santa Ana Municipal Code, staff recommends approval of the application as conditioned. And that concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions. I do not believe the applicant is here at this time.
Please, right behind you.
Sorry, he's here.
All right, Heidi, thank you. Is there any questions? Roman, did Roman?
Let me do the rest.
Okay. Any questions of Heidi at this time, or staff? Thank you. Does, does the applicant have anything that he'd like to comment on this time?
My name is Gerald Coe. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I don't have any additional comments.
Okay. Any questions of Gerald? No? All right.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. The public hearing for this item is now open. Gerald, you were the only one that had a card, so I'm assuming you're done, taken care of, no further comments?
No, sir.
Does anybody at this point in time want to speak or talk on item number six? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to the commission. Does the commission like to make, would the commission like to make a recommendation at this time? Lynette?
I'd like to move that we adopt our leadership of the commission's permit number 2018-21 as condition.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The vote is four, zero, three, three absent. At this point in time, we'd like to cover staff comments.
Yes, I did want to clarify what happened on the annexation recommendation for you. Although the recommendation, because the recommendation is, was 3-2, it will not go forward as a positive recommendation. General plan amendments are required by the government code section to have a majority of the total planning commission for your action on that. So what we'll do is we will bring it forward. We will say there was no recommendation. However, the planning commission voted three in favor and two against. So I just wanted, so if you see that going forward to the council, you'll understand why that happened.
Okay.
Other than that, I have no other comments.
Any other comments from staff at this time? Okay, thank you. We'll go to commissioner comments. Roman, do you have any comments? Nope, I guess not. Skip that. Lynette?
I, I do not, but I did find this key.
Oh, that's mine.
Oh, that's yours?
Thief.
It was underneath, it was, it was on the floor.
No, I, I, she knows.
Picture pocket.
I lose everything.
It was sitting there, so I'm like, you can't possibly be his.
You have my wallet, too?
Because it falls on the floor.
Okay. Eric?
Uh, no comments.
Cynthia?
No comments.
Roman?
Santa Ana Downtown Bike Case Company. Make sure you haven't registered yet. Make sure you're registered.
It's for the 20th or the 22nd?
The 20th. I didn't know what I walked into. I heard nothing, so I just plugged in the bike case.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification on the item number two. I know, though, one thing we probably should have done is while people were here on that item, it might have been helpful for us to have that clarification for those that were here, so that they would understand the situation, too. So in the future, if there's something like that, I mean, I look at it as from a 3-2 point of view. It was approved, and in reality, it isn't really approved. So it'd be good to have that clarification upon designation. Okay. Other than that, I have no other comments. We'll adjourn tonight's session. Next meeting is on 10:22. Thank you very much.
Thank you.